All right, call it in order. Everybody rise and pledge.
There's so much space.
I would like to make this through the firing of the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation for God and our own, and universal with liberty and justice for all.
Your misbehavior.
That's not very vice presidential.
There's no, I don't pause in between that one nation and a God. Roll call please.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Justin.
Just here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Papad.
Here.
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Present.
And councilmember Witten.
I am here.
Seven zero.
I have approval minutes for August 28th and 27th of September.
I'll make that motion.
The motions, the second. All in favor. Give them those minutes. If I'm by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. First reading.
Notice to taxpayers of proposed additional appropriations. Notice is hereby given to taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet in the Porter County Government Administration Building located 155 Indiana Avenue, Valparaiso on January 15, 2019, at 5:30 PM to consider the following additional appropriations in excess of the county budgets for the year 2019, and to transact any further business which might come before the council. Public health preparedness grant fund 8119 contractual services $34,902.08. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have a right to be heard there. Any additional appropriations as finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, which will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within 15 days of receipt of a certified copy of the action figure. Vicky Abanik auditor of Porter County Publicist January 4th in the Chesterton Tribune.
Thank you, Vicky. All right, we're gonna skip election of officers. I really like holding the scalpel for a while, so.
Fine. Keep doing it.
I'd like to nominate Sylvia Graham for president.
Well, uh, we're going to, uh, election of officers.
I nominate, um, Dan Whitten for president.
All right, there's a nomination on the floor.
Wow, caught me right on.
Any, uh, any other nominations?
Thanks.
For president? Any other nominations? All right, that's closed.
We have a second.
Are you looking for seconds or what are you looking for?
Yeah.
You need a second for nominations?
You don't need a second, but you can.
I mean, if you want a second, yeah.
Second.
Third.
I'm gonna get this done.
All right, there's a motion to a second to make Dan president. Uh, all in favor.
Aye.
Any other nominations? Aye. All opposed. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. You did a good job, Jeremy. Be hard to follow.
How long was that, five minutes?
It's, uh, quality, not, uh, not quantity. So, uh, now I'd like to open the floor to nominations for vice president of the board.
Nominate Jeff Larson.
There's a nomination for Jeff Larson and a second. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Nominations are closed. All in favor of Jeff Larson as vice president of the board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Jeff. Attorney contract.
Definitely not.
You've all got in front of you, uh, Harold's, uh, proposed contract.
I'll make the motion to retain Harold.
Second.
Is that motion then to approve the contract as presented? Yes. Second degree?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Terms of staying as they have been the last three, four years.
I think, uh, for one, Harold's, uh, done an awesome job for us, so I'm glad to see that you're willing to stay with us, Harold, and appreciate, uh, you keeping your terms the same and, uh, so. Uh, any other, uh, any other discussion? Can I get a roll call on this, please?
Okay, councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Papad.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
And councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Seven, zero.
Now, the next thing on our agenda, congratulations, Harold. Uh, the, uh, next thing on our agenda is the surveyors agreement. On your packet attached with surveyors agreement was in fact the attorney's agreement, so we now have the surveyors agreement that's been passed out. I did have an opportunity to talk with Mr. Breitsky. I know a couple of you others did too, that he was able to get a hold of. He had to be down in French Lit for something, you know, surveyors meeting, so he didn't get it. He indicated it was the same, uh, as before. This is an agreement that we do with our surveyor every year, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
So, no, no change in salary amount?
No, right? Vicky, have you seen this contract?
I have not seen it, no.
This is starting off great. Uh, Harold, have you seen the contract?
I, this is my first time saw it today. It doesn't make the, uh, there is an increase in salary, but I don't think that's.
So, is that.
Okay, what was the pay?
The affirmative salary was an increasing salary over what he would have paid, maybe not an increase. So, I would assume it's probably the same, but the language here is a little bit vague in regards to that. I did.
Vicky, can you confirm whether or not that amount's the same as previous year?
Yeah, I'm getting, um, we're getting the salary ordinance as we speak.
Do you want to, uh, revisit this? Or Tomlin will take you back.
Oh, she's gonna bring it in, in momentarily.
Forget that, that's got to be, you gotta go to the, uh, if you get that as their surveyor, it's also for the lawyer. You gotta find.
Probably what.
I got it, I got it, I got the right one. Go with it.
Didn't elected officials get a raise in budget?
What?
Didn't the elected officials get a raise in budget? Didn't you give elected officials raises?
You gotta have all the words, I'm not quite sure if it's reflected in this document.
Make a motion to approve it, that the salary is reflective, I'll amend it to the salary ordinance.
I, I, what?
Yeah, I amended my motion.
Wait.
For a second.
There she is.
I mean, it's the same thing, right?
So, what's the last grade, what was his salary?
This matches the salary ordinance that you approved.
All right, so, okay, so, is the motion second, comfortable with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, so matches the salary ordinance to be approved. Can I get a roll call on this, please?
Oh.
Does a motion or second approve it? You don't wanna do that?
Oh, no, that's fine.
You call Kevin and tell him.
Okay. Is it a roll call?
Just go for it.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Papad.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
And councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Would you, Joyce, look, Kevin, I'll do it.
Okay.
You still in the game. So, uh, next on the agenda is the Health Department Public Health Preparedness Fund. Additional $34,902.08 to contractual services. Department of Homeland Security Grant distributed through Indiana State Department of Health.
Move the code.
The grant? Yes.
You have a motion to approve the additional, Sylvia?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second discussion. Is there something you wanna tell us about this?
Um, if you want me to, I can just summarize that it's a grant that's granted for the purpose of getting the county prepared to, um, disaster rights. We've been going through some training already and, um, pretty much that's it.
Any questions from the board? Okay, can I get a roll call on this, please?
Councilmember Papad.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
And councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
So, I guess the question pops in my head is something like this, you said emergency preparedness. Is this stuff that you work with or EMA on?
Uh, yes, that's my friend, we work together. Uh, we're preparing, God forbid, there's a disaster like 9/11, and we need to prepare ourselves on a local level, and we will work with EMA, Sheriff's Department, and because we're the health department, we have a lot of specialties. We have nurses, we have environmental, we have foods. If it turns out that one of those areas is the one that has to activate, we do that.
Yeah, the health department's listed under, um, essential function number eight, which is health and medical, so we have, you know, like the biological, um, like smallpox and that, that kind of, even, uh, when we did in 2009, H1N1 actually was, the health department was the gatekeeper for 40,000 doses of flu vaccine, which we were responsible for getting out to the public. So, uh, those kind of things, and we have been doing exercises, and this is for Mike Weber, to set up those exercises and, uh, you know, to get us prepared, so we're not going, oh my God, what do we do? And who we work with, who our partners are, and that kind of thing. So, that's what he's working with, and that's what he helps us do.
Any other questions or thoughts? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Next thing on the agenda is second reading, Vicky.
Okay, whereas it has been determined as now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriate in the annual budget, therefore be it ordained by the Porter County Council of Porter County that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same, um, Public Health Preparedness Grant Fund 8119, in the amount of $34,902.08. And that concludes second reading.
Can I have a motion and second reading motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
And councilmember Papad.
Yes.
Seven, zero.
Next thing on the agenda is our appointments. Um, and arguably, I haven't even looked at this, but.
Are we missing a council member? That gap over there? So, it's just.
That's where Harold.
It is weird. So far away.
We scoot over and become a happy family?
Oh.
I'm not coming with my.
So, our first thing on the appointments are our citizens' appointments, so.
Make a motion, is that, so which one's up, Dan?
Uh, Porter County, we'll take them in order that they're on the, so start with Porter County Redevelopment Commission.
Make a motion to reappoint Don Enson.
Second.
Any other nominations for Porter County Redevelopment Commission other than Don Enson? All those in favor of Don Enson as our citizen appointment to the Porter County Redevelopment Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Don is our appointment. Now, Joy, tomorrow, letters need to go out to all these people that they're appointed as we go through this. Um, Alcohol Beverage Commission. Can I get a?
I'd like to nominate Thomas Swihart to be the Alcohol Beverage Commission appointee.
Second.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Matt Soliday.
We have two nominations. We have Thomas Swihart and Matt Soliday. Those are the only two that apply. Uh, any other nominations? Nominations being closed. Let's take a roll call vote.
All right, a test run, let's go.
Let's see how we do.
Um, which appointment, um, you just call the name and you say who you want, right?
Sounds like a great idea.
Okay, councilmember Sims. I, we do this, and rotating orders, so, sorry.
I'm gonna make a conclusion.
Welcome aboard.
Could be important this time you buy a beer.
Determining reelection right here.
Hold your heart, uh, here to. Hold my heart? Yeah. Swihart.
Uh, councilmember Witten.
How did I end up?
Put your heart in, Dan, that's over anyway. I'm gonna go with Thomas Swihart.
Councilmember Graham. Matt Soliday. Councilmember Justin.
Swihart.
Councilmember Larson.
Um, Swihart.
Councilmember Papad.
Swihart.
And councilmember Reavis.
Will not leave Sylvia alone.
Thank you.
Matt Soliday.
Okay. Decide to choose, favor of Thomas Swihart.
So, let's move along to, uh, Peter Bowles.
Make a motion to reappoint Scott Williams.
Yes.
Good call.
Scott's been out there through some.
Scott's been given nothing for heavy served on this board.
Heavy issues.
Dan, you really wanna screw that up?
Awesome, you don't want another nomination?
Not good.
Focus.
You're gonna call in any of them?
Uh, Sylvia's asked for you to call a question, Dan.
All right, I will call a question, man. All those in favor of Scott Williams, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Scott has it. Uh, Chesterton EDC.
He's got it now.
We currently have Lloyd Kittredge.
He did not, he did not apply.
I believe he, oh, he did not reapply.
I'll make the motion for Nick Walden.
That's a good call.
Second. Any other? All those in favor of Nick Walden, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Porter GDC.
Make a motion for, um, councilman Mike Sarver.
Second.
Swihart's not a councilman.
Oh, sorry.
Um, his talk. Um, any other, uh, nominations? All those in favor of Mike Sarver, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Valparaiso EDC, only one.
Nominate Patrick McKinley.
Second. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Patrick McKinley, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, so what's next? Let's just keep on truckin' here. So, now we've got, is that all of our citizen appointments then? We've covered them all?
Yes.
So, let's get into the council appointments.
Do we have a list?
Do we have our list of the current?
No deal.
Larson and Harper right now, here.
So, Community Corrections Advisory Board, currently we have Councilman Larson and Harper.
Why, he's a lawyer.
It sounds like, uh, it sounds like, I think that sounds like a firm we should start.
Larson, Harper.
Larson, Harper, Harper, Harper.
Yeah, I understand this is for Harper's, it's her name.
All right, what's your, what's your pleasure with Community Corrections Advisory Board?
Harold, you didn't, Jeff, Jeff, you're on it?
I'm on it, but it's, it's up to you guys.
No, I, I'm on, I'm on Jeff Larson.
Second. What were you saying, Harold?
I don't believe I was formally appointed to this, I think it was just.
Did you go to any meetings? You're a terrible appointment.
I'm not, I'm not saying any.
All right, if you need Harold to come along for something, give him a holler, wait. All those in favor of Jeff Larson as our Community Corrections Advisory Board, uh, appointments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Mercy.
Jeff Larson.
Second. Any other appointments, sir? Anybody got interested? Seems like you're doing a pretty good job, Jeff, keep it good at work. All those.
I'm paying position, it's awesome.
It's a great, it's a great board.
Great board.
All those in favor of Jeff Larson, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
I actually do like that.
Good.
Nikki, I'm currently on it, I'll do it again.
I'm on my, Dan.
Second. Any other folks interested in it? All those in favor of me? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you in favor of me?
I was waiting for you to say opposed.
Opposed, aye.
Aye. You can hear a roll call. I'm happy to hear which one it is.
No, move on.
All right. Uh, Plan Commission.
Make a motion to point, uh, Greg Sims.
Any other, any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mike Justin.
Uh, any other nominations?
Was that Dan, was that under Dan's breath there?
All right, let's, uh, let's have ourselves a roll call.
Okay, councilmember Witten.
I knew it.
I am going to, uh, fulfill my word and vote for, uh, Councilman Sims.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Graham.
Greg Sims.
Councilmember Justin.
Justin.
Uh, councilmember Larson.
Justin.
Councilmember Papad.
Sims.
Uh, councilmember Reavis.
Sims.
And, uh, councilmember Sims.
That's a surprise.
Oh, I had him.
Uh, recycling and, uh, that was a little uncomfortable. Recycling and Waste District, uh, currently it's Karen, but Karen's gone.
Sylvia's expressed an interest in this.
I would like to be on it.
Yeah, I think she, yeah, I'll second that.
Sure. Um, anybody else? Awesome. All those in favor of Sylvia being recycling and waste district, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Nice having, congratulations Sylvia.
Thank you.
You was proud over there. Uh, we have two. Currently it's Sylvia and Jeff.
I'd vote.
You guys want to stay on?
I'd like to.
Yeah, I'd like to.
All right, so we have Sylvia and Jeff, uh, second half course. Uh, any other? Done? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Congratulations Sylvia and Jeff. Porter County Council on Aging, I will not make a joke, I will not make a joke.
I'm fine in 12 years.
This is the new improved Dan Whitten. I think I've pointed footage already.
We have a nomination for Sylvia on the Council of Aging.
Absolutely, yes.
And, uh.
Who's laughing in the crowd? I heard that.
We're not making jokes, you guys have done.
Is there more than one appointment on there?
No, it's just the one. And, uh, Sylvia's doing a great job, great job. Uh, no other nominations, all in favor of Sylvia?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Juvenile Justice Advisory Board, currently we have Andy Bozak.
I wouldn't mind that position.
I wouldn't either.
Sylvia's expressed an interest, it, it, I'll nominate, I'll nominate Sylvia, good job.
Multi-vig, can we have multi-vig go?
Yeah.
Yeah, we work good together.
Perfect.
I'm gonna make that nomination Sylvia and Jeff.
Couple of sweets, right?
Couple of sweets, that's right.
And I've never mentioned anyone else's age.
Larson is my maiden name.
Uh-oh.
It's not your turn.
They did. They know we need to get home down here, the concrete down.
All those in favor of Sylvia and Jeff Larson to.
That's a little close to home.
All those in favor of Sylvia Larson Graham.
Oh, you could draw the Larson.
Signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Stormwater Advisory Board, right now it's Jeremy.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on it.
You stay on there?
Yeah.
We're made Jeremy.
Any other?
I'll join, I'll join the crowd.
It's fine.
I'd nominate Bob.
Do we have two on there?
Uh, I'm not certain, I think it's numbered.
I don't think we can have two.
Oh, oh.
I think that's a number certain, I was created by that.
Is it?
Yes.
You wanna stay on that, Jeremy?
Yeah, I would like to.
There's a lot going on in South Haven, it's probably.
Yep.
All those in favor of, I have Jeremy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sylvia, do you have a question?
No.
Oh. Um, E911 Policy Board, I'm, I'm it.
You are.
Congratulations.
I would nominate, I would nominate you again.
I think it just goes with the presidency.
Right.
Uh, what's going, I mean, is there something, Jeff, you've been attending those, right? Is there stuff going on there that we?
Well, yeah, I think there's some, some further discussion we need to have on policy.
I think you were designated before by the president, you wanna do it again?
Sure.
Oh. No, it's good.
Was that a good one or a bad one? I haven't revolved in my life. What, uh, what, you, you had some interest in that Sylvia, is that what it is?
Well, I, um, it's okay, it's fine.
Sure? That didn't sound like mine to me.
Is that something that is limited?
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it's the, either the president or choice.
Or his appointee.
His appointee, so, do you want, I mean, it's, it's up to you.
Well.
I'll defer to Sylvia, she's really interested in something.
Is that something you wanted to, Sylvia?
Um, I'm very familiar with, with that, but you have been attending, so I will, I will defer you to.[1430.12]
I'm Russell.
No.
Oh, it is?
I'm beyond time.
It's me, guys, so I...
I'll be there.
I just don't know what to do.
I think there's a lot, I think there's a lot of work to be, uh, to be completed there, and I'd like to continue at that part of the process. And I think there's some stuff that just popped up that we need to...
Alright, Sylvia, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just designate Jeff. For a sign of trouble, you let me know and I'll yank him.
We'll have, we'll form a coup.
Oh, yeah, that, that, yeah. Then, uh, okay, Jeff, just, if you would, just keep me posted on what's going on there.
Thanks.
Um, Porter County Redevelopment Commission, uh, I'm one of them. Jeremy, I think you've been doing that?
Mm-hmm.
And I would like to be, to be my designate, if you don't mind?
No, I'll pay to do it.
Um, the other one we, uh, there's another one up, it's a one-year appointment. Porter County Redevelopment Commission, we currently have Don Enson.
Already did that.
We already done it.
Pointed him in.
Alright, so then we're into, anything else? I'm just looking at this list you gave me, so.
It's only zones.
Yeah. So now we give it to the liaison. I don't care.
Really, you wanna just pull the ones out that Bozak's name's in, Dan, and then just...
Yeah, yeah, I spoke, the one I spoke with, with the coroner, I'd like to be the coroner's liaison. And I think she spoke with somebody else, too.
Thank you.
So...
I'd nominate you for that position.
So, why don't we just roll down this thing and we'll go through who currently has it and who weren't it? Let's roll, do we have a list of our currents?
Yeah.
Can I take it? Here.
You sit here?
Yeah.
Alright, yeah. Alright, let's start off with the adult probation, it's Karen and Jeff, who wants them?
I, I'll be on it with Jeff.
Jeff, you still want it?
Sure, thanks Sylvia.
Anybody else?
Two are forming quite the relationship.
Oh, I see, this is trouble. Uh...
No.
Anybody else, uh, alright. Airport, currently it's me and Jeff, I'd like to stick with that.
I'll stay, I'd like to try it.
You wanna be on it, Bob?
Yep.
Okay. I'll defer to Bob.
That's good.
As we roll through this, then we'll finish up with a motion approving what we've done, so just, let's just... Animal Shelter, currently it was Jeremy and Karen.
I'd like it.
It's good.
So we got Greg, anybody else?
I'll stay there with Greg.
Greg and Jeremy. Uh, Anabuse, Karen and Sylvia.
I, I will be on it.
Great for Greg and Sylvia.
Yeah.
It might be, it might be good for Greg being in the education.
Assessor, it's me and Jeremy, somebody want it, somebody else take it? Jeremy, you wanna stay as assessor?
That's fine.
Anybody else, I don't want it, somebody else want it?
Bob, you wanna do that?
Nope.
I'll be on it.
Alright, so...
You don't like John?
I do, I just, when I'm chairman, I don't like to have a lot of that. Um, so Jeremy and Sylvia.
Okay.
Uh, Auditor, I think, I'd like to do it, and somebody else?
I'd like to stay there.
I'm on it.
It's, it doesn't matter to me, but I'd like to be one, can somebody, who guys?
We can have three if we want.
Okay.
There you go.
Actually, you make a point. Hey, Sylvia and Jeremy, actually, it's a good idea Sylvia. Me, yeah. Circuit Court, I'd like to be one, I need another?
The law firm of, uh, Whitten and Bozak, I got all the rest of them taken.
So why don't we just handle all the, all the, all the courts, I'd like to be one of them and I...
I'll, I'll take the other.
There you go.
Good.
So, myself and Mike.
That's a good combination.
Fourteen, me and Mike, fourteen. Uh, Clerk, we got, uh, myself, which I'd like to...
Good, like to stay there also, too.
Jeremy, did you wanna, is that one you wanna do?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing that.
That can be three.
I, I'll, I'll back out of that, so Jeff, you said you wanna be?
Somebody's gotta straighten that off, if not...
I see nothing but, you know, smooth sailing ahead. So we got Jeremy, who else? Jeff, is that what you said, Sylvia?
I wouldn't mind.
Now, when we have these multiple liaisons, if something happens with one of you guys, we'd just like to have the two know.
Yeah, we can work together, right?
Yeah, just so everybody...
Right, that's good.
Um, Commissioners, I'd, I'll be one of them, but I want, somebody else?
I'll be one.
Yeah, I'll jump in that.
We have three now, so we have me, Mike, and, uh, Bob?
Yeah, they'll talk to me now.
Yeah.
Which one?
I see how you knocked me out of it.
That's okay.
You want my spot, dude, though, you're telling me?
No, dude, I'm good.
Tourism, right now we've got, uh, we actually have...
I'd like to stay on there.
Me, no, Jeremy, Sylvia and Jeff, you guys all cool staying on there?
Sylvia's, no, not particularly, I would.
You want Greg? Alright, so we got Greg, we got, uh, Jeff and Jeremy. And then Coroner, I'd like to do it, Mike, too?
Nope.
And, uh, E-911 Public Safety, right, we already, did we already do that one?
Yeah.
I'd like to do it, too.
And then, oh, no, we didn't do that one yet, so who do we, that was my appointment, so Jeff, you should be one of them. Who else?
I'll stay there.
Me, please?
Yeah.
So who?
Keep it.
Graham, Reavis and Larson.
I keep track of this, too, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Election Boards will probably be the same as, uh, the Clerk.
Sure, yeah.
I wouldn't mind.
So Jeff, Jeremy, Sylvia?
Yes.
So if there's any glitches in the election, it's on you three.
Ah.
I'll go ahead and remove myself from that.
Uh, EMA, right now it's Sylvia and Jeff?
Yeah, I'd like that.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that also.
And if anybody else wants it, as we're going along, jump in. Expo Center, right now it's Jeff and, so Greg? Andy?
Bob, do you want on there?
No.
So, I'd like to try it, as much as we can, keep it to two. I know we have a lot of threes, but when we have more than two, it just seems like some of these elected officials get a little out there. But, alright, so right now it's Greg and, uh, you Jeff?
Yes.
Extension Office.
I would like...
You're staying on Sylvia?
Come on, pick it.
Yeah. Facilities.
I'd like to stay on there.
Fine. County Services Bureau.
Yeah.
Stay.
Reavis and Justin?
Stay.
Alright, and then, uh, Health Department, Karen and Sylvia, but...
Yeah, I'd like to stay on it.
Sylvia and somebody.
I can go on it.
Sylvia and Greg. Um, Highway.
I'd like to stay on there.
I would like to...
It's Sylvia and Jeff now, you guys wanna stay on?
Yes.
HR, currently it's Sylvia and Mike.
I would like to stay on it.
You guys are doing a bang-up job. What's, uh, you guys both wanna stay on, continue with the good work? Perfect. Uh, ITS was, um, was, uh, Karen and Jeremy? So Jeremy and...
I can do it.
Jeremy and Greg. And then, uh, Jail Sheriff and the Garage was me, uh, Jeremy and Jeff.
Party Court.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'd like, that's, I'd like to stay there.
Want to just stay the same, Reavis?
Yeah. We've got a pretty good relationship there.
Yeah. Uh, Juvenile Attention, Wild, go for it.
That's a good thing, that's a good thing for Mike, yeah.
So, Mike, Justin, and then, uh, Juvenile Probation. So I'm gonna get a letter to Bozak, let him know that Justin took his spot. Uh, Memorial Opera House.
I'd like to roll still, but I really would like...
I don't know if you guys knew this, but I really like the nation.
I would really like to roll. I'd like to be on the board, but I don't get offered any roles, that's a problem.
That's, that's pretty nice, the Catty's a little...
What we're doing here, the Addams Family, I thought we were rich. That's right. So, right now, it's, uh, I would like to stay on, and right, it's me, Sylvia and Jeff. Is it that way?
Yep.
Let's see who can do the best.
I got two shows on the table. Uh, let's go back to, I, I treated Fordy like one of the courts.
Yeah, you did.
So, um, Museum, right, is that our next one?
Yes, I'd like to stay on it.
Currently it's, uh, Sylvia and Karen Conville, but so Sylvia and...
I'd like it.
Alright, so we got Sylvia, Greg. Oh, yeah, I'd like to do, and...
Hey, I'll stay on that one.
Parks, don't care. It's four, but we just, just cut it to three, so give me three names.
I'm happy with being on it.
I'll stay on it. I'll stay on it. Maybe I have four again?
Jeremy, do you care?
Remove me.
Alright, so let's just do, uh, Mike, Sylvia and Jeff.
Okay. He'd be on Plan Commission.
Plan Commission.
Pop rock.
I'll do it.
Bob, you wanna do that together?
Yep.
Alright.
Shouldn't our Plan Commission of Women maybe? Is on that, shouldn't?
I would think.
Yeah, 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 Greg, put Greg on there.
Um...
Are we adding to that, or are we taking that?
No, it's just give me, give Greg and one other name. I mean, how many do you want?
Pop rock.
What?
You know, liaison to the Plan Commission.
Well, it'd be the two of us.
That's what I'm saying, but per se.
When he's putting Greg on there, 'cause he's a great appointment.
Right, and I'll, yeah. I was on it, they let me sit there for a while.
That's true, that's true. Uh, I, I guess Greg and Bob wants to do it. Uh, so it's, uh, Greg and Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you care about that? Police Service Assessor, that should be.
Yeah.
Jeremy?
I'll do it.
I'll do it with you. Um, so myself and Jeremy.
They'll see the new building soon.
That's right. Uh, Porter Starks, myself and Sylvia. I'd like to stick around with that unless somebody else wants to do it, I don't care. Print Shop, don't anybody fight over that, right now it's Andy?
I, I can do it.
I'm sure you can, you got Greg. Greg's doing the print shop. Uh, Prosecutor, I'd like to do that one.
I'd like to talk with you on that.
Nah.
You ran the last one off, you're gonna keep this one out a while?
Okay, see, now you gotta do that, you gotta do that, so it's myself and Jeff. Public Defender, right now it's Jeff and Jeremy.
You happy with that, Jeff?
Yeah.
Uh, Recorder, Sylvia and Karen, but Sylvia, you wanna stay on?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. Anybody else wanna do one?
Nobody else?
Doesn't have to be, but it's recorder, for God's sakes. Uh, alright, Recycling and Waste Management, Sylvia, right there on that board now, so it's me, Sylvia. I'm happy to pull my name off, let me know if anything happens over there at Recycling and Waste Management. Soil and Water, it's Sylvia and Mike.
Let's see.
Yep.
Uh, Development and Stormwater Management, right now it's Jeremy, I think it's Dave Jeremy.
Yep.
Surveyor, very exciting, uh, right now it's Jeremy and Sylvia.
Yep.
You guys okay with that?
Always look forward to the conversations.
It's a high-speed, it's a high-speed appointment. Uh, Treasurer, it's myself and Sylvia, I would like to do that still.
Okay.
And Sylvia, too?
Yep, please.
Veterans, you guys knew this, but I'm a veteran, so I'd like to do services, I don't know if you guys knew that?
Oh, man, I've never heard that before.
On behalf of the fellow veterans, you're welcome.
You're welcome.
Um, so myself and Jeff. Anybody else? Uh, Voters Registration, I went absolutely, nothing to do with this liaison job, so, uh...
Yeah, you really screwed that one up, too.
I'm not, it's you, it's you, Jeremy.
I probably would've got, I probably would've got off then, I think that's very good.
I'll be on that.
I, I would do it.
Alright.
Well, that's, yeah.
That's self-sacrifice again, dude, where do you go, Greg?
Yeah.
It can't get any worse.
So right now it's Greg and, um, and Jeremy?
Jeremy, Jeremy, you wanna off there? If he wants off, I'll serve with Greg.
Yeah.
Well, the, the elections and the voters probably be similar, I, I would imagine.
Who's on, who's, who would you do elections? It was Jeremy and who?
It was the three of us, Reavis, Karen.
Yeah, same, same three.
Okay.
Guys can all go down there together, so there's a good chance one of you'll make it out. Uh, Waste and Measures.
I'll be on it.
I, I could be on that one, too.
Alright, right now it's Sylvia and Jeff.
That's the...
So now we're gonna do Sylvia and, uh, Greg. Wildlife Management, that's a cool one, Andy's got it.
Let's, let's keep him there.
I'll be on it.
Sylvia's Wildlife, alright.
Can two be on that one?
I bet we could put seven. Uh, you wanna do it, too?
Yeah.
Alright. Sylvia and Greg, perfect. And so, I think that's it. So can I get a motion to approve all of it, or a layoff?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
We have to poll, inform and also get everybody happy of the specific decision.
This is crazy.
It is, it really is, we're not familiar with it.
A lot of hidden costs.
Uh... So let's talk to the Attorney, where, Attorney's Report, what do you got for us, Harold?
The only, uh, we can use it to early report is that folks will know that the, uh, the spend of the, the music claims is entered to, uh, an outside from the county's company, the county insurance company, um, is gonna, uh, determine how the paper that kicks in. And I...
We're not, we're not named in that, though?
No, we're not. Um, the county is named solely, um, and that's solely, but the council is not, too.
Right.
The, uh, it's not happy, um, that was, that's entered to.
Okay.
And, uh...
It's Betty Knight's old firm, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, there's a recent right which, that states that the manager or there, the substance there was, in terms of the state, you know, and, uh, my son and I will be aware of it.
Okay, anything else, Harold, that you need to let us know at the point?
The only thing, uh, is the, there's a pending public access, public records request, like I, uh, are emailed to the council and we're in the process in terms of the council's response, uh, I already drafted a response.
You all want our phone, do you want our phones?
Harold, if at any time during any of the stuff, you think there's a need for us to have a detailed discussion in an executive session? Just let us know, we can call an executive session before our meeting, or at another time, just so we can get into the nuts and bolts. Anything else?
Nope.
Um, Jessica Bailey, our Porter County Clerk.
Let's talk about elections.
Come on down. Bring your all crew.
Please bring us.
Uh, how's it going? Thank you so much for joining us, there's been so much happening in the wide, wonderful and exciting world of elections. And, uh, so why don't you talk to us a little bit about, um, the election?
Um, I sent to Senator Monroe Reavis, and I'm assuming that everyone else receives it, um, the proposed contract, which is the same as last year. And the attachment should have been like...
Is that what we have in front of us right here? Is that this? Sales, consolidated sales order?
And there should be photos of the proposed machines.
I, I can't hear you. Well, hold on, let's, everybody get, hold on one second, everybody get out the Porter County Clerk election equipment packet. And let's get on the same sheet here.
Are we gonna talk about the sale orders, the sales order?
Yeah, mhm, that's what...
We're not going to, are you asking us to make a decision tonight, or are you asking us to have a discussion tonight?
A discussion tonight.
You understand that, Sylvia?
Yes, thank you.
So, um, go ahead, has everybody got it?
Yeah.
Alright, Jessica.
Okay, so my understanding, this is the same proposal that was shown to you last year. Um, the only thing that should be changed in it is some reorder of items. It's the same content, just in a different format.
What, what specifically was changed?
Um, items on page one were spread out throughout the contract, and they were just moved to page one, so there was easier reading. And I believe it was to agree to, um, with one of their Ohio contracts, they had to format it this way instead of the way that was formatted last year.
Have the Commissioners all left?
Have they all gone?
Laura just walked out.
And has, I assume Scott McClure's left?
I would think so.
Okay, so, uh, well, one, one question I had was, at one point there, and I haven't really gotten that deep into this right now, but there was some discussion about, uh, the financing and the interest rate that we could get through financing. Has David Banks gotten back with you what he got from the banks?
Um, he preliminarily told me that he had lower rates than what ESMS were, was offering. He said he'd have final numbers tomorrow.
That was seven percent, though.
Yeah, so just...
Near a nine-seven-five.
Yes, everybody, if everybody knows that, as a follow-up to the last time this came in front of us, with the proposal for a financing agreement, I asked the, uh, Election Board, or at least a member, to get us, uh, what they could get privately for financing. We can make a decision on how we wanna fund if we decide to go forward, to see which was the better option, and that is what David Banks was, uh, doing for us. So, okay. So go on, Jessica, I'm sorry.
Um, yes, um, Mr. Banks reached out to the same banks that were reached out to before.
Yeah.
Um, and he's waiting, I think, for one more to get back. Uh, some of the questions that I received was if ESMS would finance, it was a nine-point-seven-five interest rate. And, um, Mr. Banks said that he's almost one-hundred percent positive that local banks will do better.
Right, that's, that's what they saw in the first round.
Correct. Now, interest rates have increased since last year's proposal, but, um, he doesn't think so.
He was hoping, he wasn't sure if he'll ever get some rates to us in time.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be better. Nobody's at nine-seven-five. Well, well...
So the interest rate at this point is not determined, not...
No, we'll have that information tomorrow.
So let me ask you this question, um, so this is, we're all clear, what's the timeline here? So I assume you're going, have you already gone to the Commissioners to ask them to sign the contract?
No, from my understanding, they wanted to know that you guys were okay with the dollar amount, and then they would look at the contract. Um, I've spoken with the Auditor's Office, and, um, she was liking the idea that we put the down payment down this year and the first payment be budgeted for, for nine-seven-five.
What, are we talking about one million eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, first page?
Mhm.
And that after they're giving us three-hundred-and-forty thousand trade-in, two-hundred-thousand-dollar credit, discount, whatever, what do you wanna use? And seventy thousand dollars in freight?
And installation, which is, installation...
It's exclusive, installation.
Installation.
What's the installation of an portable?
Putting everything together when it arrives, testing.
The suitcase, I guess, for lack of a better word. I noticed on page two, the first item, the refurbished scanners, 140 of them, I'm assuming that's one for each precinct, plus a few spares. So, we're buying refurbished equipment?
You don't have to, but that was to save money last year during negotiations. These are gently used, but certainly there's new available. The reason we chose the refurbishment for the county's cost.
So, what does that mean to you guys?
They're still warranted as new, so you'll still have the same warranty, and they're still gonna be able to use them for 15 years, just like you would or have your old equipment from us.
What does gently used mean?
Yeah, that's six months.
Well, they're doing, they're selling us what they're gonna do with our equipment. They're gonna take our equipment and give us $200,000.
How would you describe our equipment to somebody else?
They're gonna take our equipment, give us $300,000.
Hold on.
They're gonna get, they're gonna take our equipment and give us $300,000 credit, polish it up, wash it up, change the batteries, and sell it to somebody else as refurbished. We're getting some other county's refurbished scanner.
How old is the equipment that you've refurbished? So, it's just one election, so it would be November 2018 election, newly manufactured over the summer. So, if I buy a MacBook this year, although it's dated 2015, it's this year's election equipment, it's not 2015. And, so, let me say something else. We're actually going to end up recycling most of your old voting machines.
Are you with ESNS?
Yes.
Because most of the country right now is moving from the 100 that you have today to this new machine. And so, we're seeing the market for that actually dry out. So, most of that is actually gonna get recycled at the end of the day. Some of it will be kept as spares, as counties that aren't able to upgrade, or countries that aren't able to upgrade. We'll make sure we have spares around, so that's why we wanna buy those back to the spare market.
Jessica.
Item three, is that the, is that the, I guess we'll use the word, the counter that would be at election headquarters?
Yes, so.
So, there's only one of them?
Yes, sir, and that counts 300 ballots a minute.
No, no, that's not what I'm, my question. There's only one of them?
Yes, sir.
So, if it breaks down, will we count hanging chairs?
If it breaks down, we have a technician driving around.
Well, there's only one, so it's here.
Right, there's one here, but each election, we have roaming technicians. So, you probably don't wanna buy two DSA-50s, because they're like 100 grand a piece. So, it's probably not gonna break down.
Oh, okay.
I'll say that. You're right, it's certainly possible, Counselor, but in our experience, the roaming technician with a DSA-50 in the back is sufficient. And so, that's what we do, so you don't have to spend another 100,000. Is it similar in counties our size that you only provide one? Yes. In Marion County, they have six of the Indianapolis. So, they have about six times, they have about 650,000, you've got about 122,000. So, one is just about right for you. Like I said, Marion County, Indiana, six. So, it's right in line with the normal ratio.
So, with the, if I may ask, with the refurbished equipment, it's only been used once, why didn't they keep it?
So, rentals, so, some counties around the United States, in a bigger election, they'll rent extra equipment out of concern that they don't have enough, so.
How much does it cost to rent?
I'd have to get that to you, Sylvia, I apologize. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Just a thought.
Yeah. But renting over the long haul is a bad idea in elections. Here's why. Because you're gonna end up paying in rental fees over a 15-year period that you would own it, you're gonna end up buying it five or six times. And in the, in the election world, there's not a new voting machine every year. It's just not how it works. This is highly regulated by the federal and state governments. And so, you're not gonna see, it costs millions of dollars just to bring through federal and state testing, the system you see before you today. So, companies aren't doing that every day, or every year even.
You know, when I, when I had starter's equipment last fall, or last year, one of the real selling points to me was you could identify a photo along with the paper ballot. But State of Indiana will not let you take a photo. Is that what I?
So, explain what you mean.
Well, I was, I was shown and told that when you come in, you swipe your license, but it also takes a picture of the person swiping the license.
Certainly, that's possible.
That's what I was told by whoever.
I remember, I remember being there.
Yes.
I would have never said our poll book would take a picture of a voter while they're signing it.
Well, I sure wouldn't have made it up.
I know, and someone must have said that, and I apologize. But, like I said, certainly you could do that, but it would be contrary to.
Well, I heard it against the law.
Yeah.
It's interesting, they make you have a license, but you can't, you're identified. So, that's okay.
On page, on page six, am I looking at $200,000 maintenance?
On page six, you can see the maintenance cost there, but that's over a, let me get to page six.
Sounds like the answer's yes, but it's over.
That's over a period of four years, though.
Okay.
So, that's just adding up what you're paying over.
On page, on page five, it says total maintenance for the initial term is $360,000. Is that?
Over four years.
Over four years?
Yeah. So, that includes the hardware maintenance, which is laid out in page six. It includes the software licenses, which is laid out on page seven, or excuse me, eight. And also on page five, included in that is the firmware license, which is the software on the units. And that is also laid out on page. Do you guys own the rights to that software?
Yes, they do. They own everything about it, right? I read that somewhere.
So, we're the world's largest manufacturer of voting machines. We've been in business 40 years, the same owner, headquartered in the Midwest. 63% of the United States votes on an ESNS voting machine. And we've, most of the time scatted the headlines, but we have a pretty good track record of making sure counties have successful elections. And in the last election, when the vote count was delayed, we sent more people in. We went for the problem. We didn't run away from it, and we're proud that we did that.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't tout our last election.
Yeah, I know.
Probably scratch that one.
We didn't run away from it, is what I'm trying to say.
Never gonna happen again.
In the hardest time, we were right there with you.
I get you.
Did we have, did we have a tremendous amount of equipment issues in the last election? That's a question for the court. That's a question for the court.
No, not at the moment.
Okay. So, I mean, I've been sitting here for a long time, we've been talking about voting equipment for 10 years now. Do we have, I said this to you yesterday, I mean, you chatted, do we have an equipment issue, do we have a people issue? In terms of lack of people, lack of training, lack of enthusiasm, or whatever word you want, it's lack of leadership. And I'm gonna look at you when I use that word. That's all I'm saying.
How old is that DS, the 100 we're using now? You said that's 15 years? 1986 is when the first one was rolled off the press. And when was this 200 brought online? So, the original version of that was 2007, but there was a redo in 2016. So, there was 11, 11, 11 years in between the process of manufacturing. We didn't change the name of it. We, but we, it is totally different. It's upgraded, it's all. So, the ones that we're dealing with are 22, 23 years old now. Right. Now, let me tell you this, as the product goes along, the life of the product, we will come in and do firmware and software updates, as they're certified by the federal and state governments. And so, we don't give up on the product. How many municipalities are still using the 100? There's probably still close to 50,000 in the field, but it's going away every day. So, for example, Dallas County, Texas, they're now, I think tomorrow. What percentage of your equipment is old that was? What's that? What percentage of the equipment you support is that old? That is the oldest. That's the oldest that we support. There was an older one, but that, I think the last county went offline about two years of the, one that was. So, we can expect. Manufactured in 1979. How much longer can we expect to see updates for that system, since it's already 23 years old? So, I would say, you know, we always say it's built last 15 years. I was just telling you, the Eagle, which was built in 1979, the last one went offline two years ago in Indiana. We stopped doing updates for that in the early 2000s. So. The way that the end of the usable cycle on that 100. Yeah, right. We're not doing any more updates. There's one that's. That was my question. There are updates available.
Just one, one follow-up with what Sylvia asked in regards to rental. If we were to look at rental, that would not include the ma, the maintenance fee wouldn't, we wouldn't have to pay a maintenance fee, right?
Yes, but.
It would still.
So, the cost of this equipment is 1.8 million. That's what you'd spend over 15 years on equipment. If you rented, you'd spend three, four, maybe five times that.
But we're still.
Over a 15-year period.
But if buying it at 1.8, you're still spending another 50,000 a year in maintenance, correct? Okay. So, it's not just 1.8, it's 1.8 plus 50,000 every year?
Yep.
Exactly.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
But it's still really cheaper, in my opinion. I've looked at the numbers for other counties too, and I've looked at counties that have rented, like Carroll County, Indiana, for example. They've always rented. They could have purchased that system, I think it was four times over, in the life that they had that exact same. That makes sense, just like Elise, it makes sense, you have some equity in the product when they buy it. The question, I think Greg was just trying to. Well, it was, it was more about the maintenance agreement, but, but I know it's, it's included in the rental also, so it's, you're not getting away from it, no matter what you've been buying.
It's just a way to confirm, what are you, what are you asking us to do tonight? I'm sorry, Greg, are you done?
Sorry.
I, Glenn, I got a couple more questions out there.
Yeah, Bob.
Yeah, you do.
I guess I'm looking at the poll books. We gotta buy ballots, so much of ballot, am I missing that, or am I not reading right?
Instead of getting the full ballot, like you're used to looking at right now, it would be more of an index card. So, they're not pre-printed, so you're not throwing away thousands if you don't use them. Instead, they print out with each individual voter.
But that is, is that $400,000 included in the 1.9, or is that, that's in there?
Yes, sir.
Can we buy, do we have to buy poll books, I guess, that's my question.
You can do the paper poll books.
Huh?
You can do paper poll books, which is what you're currently doing.
Right. Do we have to buy the electronic poll books?
Good point.
Do you have to? No.
That's where it's susceptible. That's where you.
All I'm saying, is that money better spent on people? That's all I'm saying. Training, paying for training, me and you talked about paying them for training, pay, increasing the pay for poll workers, so we get the 18-year-olds out of high school that love a day out of school anyway, et cetera, et cetera. Is that money better spent? That's all I'm asking.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I could speak to that.
No, no, I'm talking to the clerk.
Okay, sorry.
I think investing in people is something that has to be done, but I don't think we need to do it to the dollar amount of the poll book.
I.
I don't think we need to do it to the dollar amount of the poll book. We're, for, I put out an email to all of the Indiana clerks, and we're down in what we pay our poll workers on our election.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
But we're not that far off.
So.
Compared to the entire state, we're not that far off.
Are you asking us for e-poll books? Are you saying that's what you want?
Yes.
And, so, tell us very quickly the benefit to that over paper.
So, the e-poll book, had we had the, not that we never have those issues again, but if we have the issues where a poll doesn't open, say, an electrical issue, or a tree falls down on top of it, and the poll cannot open, you can take the information that would be in that paper poll book and load it on all of the e-poll books. So, if somebody was supposed to go to Portage 28, and that poll cannot open for one reason or another, you can put a note on the door that says, anyone for, that would vote at Portage 28 can go to any other polling location. And with an agreement from the judge, all we have to do is push a button, and that precinct is now live at every single polling location.
And I think, Jessica, just so I understand it, you are confident that we need the e-poll books, and there's benefit to us. And you're also confident, from an overall equipment standpoint, that it's time that we need an upgrade. We need new equipment.
Yeah, we need new equipment. This equipment, it would make it easier for the poll workers as well. What's not on this paperwork is that there are these bins that would be, that I talked with Jeremy about, and he's willing to throw them in, one for every one of the.
Precincts.
DS 200, instead of getting the suitcases, so the poll workers are used to come picking up these heavy suitcases that are kind of falling apart and ripped. Those suitcases would then be turned into these blue to opens, and they're put inside the machines, or delivered at the same time. So, instead of the poll workers, most of which are either the younger spectrum or the older spectrum, having to pick up all of these heavy suitcases that are falling apart, all they have to do is pick up a pair of keys.
So, it's clear.
And then when they're done, they don't have to deliver them back, they lock them back inside the box and re-deliver the keys.
How heavy is that box? The fully loaded and everything.
It has wheels.
Still, how heavy is it?
Whatever.
So, we still, we're past the e-poll book type of discussion now, right? We're talking about the equipment?
Mm-hmm.
So, let's go back to the e-poll books. Bob, you had a question.
Sorry.
You asked the question, do we need e-poll books? You said no, but then you said you want us to get them, which I don't disagree with you, but I wanted to hear more about what you think makes it worth the cost. Reason for that is, historically, we've been inundated with emails or calls or saying how the e-poll.
E-poll books didn't work.
They're the worst things on earth, and then outside, the same person said they were the greatest thing, and then they were terrible again. So, I.
Yep. And I don't discount that the version that was being used then was not the best version.
Last year, you're saying last year is the ones that were used?
No.
I don't think anything went wrong with them last year from.
Okay.
We have only used them in early voting, right? No?
Yes, they were used in early voting. Part of the same reason, you don't have to have all of these paper poll books, you just sign in on one machine, and it has every precinct loaded.
So, I can add to that conversation. That is the only piece of equipment that is connected to the internet?
Internet, yes.
What, I mean, what assurances, I mean, how do you, how do we avoid any kind of?
Russian interference.
Russian interference. How do we avoid not Wi-Fi inability? How do we, I mean, is that the only hackable system that we have? Is that the one that can fail? What can fail on Election Day? Is that the piece?
Look, no voting machine has ever been hacked in the United States, so far. Okay, that's somebody not funny. Part of the reason for that is they're not connected to the internet.
Okay.
But the poll books are.
E-poll books, that's what we're talking about.
E-poll books are connected to the internet in Indiana. Some county, some states don't require that. Indiana requires if you have e-poll book, it must be connected to the internet. ESNS is the world's largest manufacturer of voting machines.
We heard that.
The Department of Homeland Security has designated us critical infrastructure, which means we're in close communication with the FBI and DHS officials every week. We have a chief security officer.
Okay, hold on a second. So, what exactly are you asking us to do? We got the resume, that's cool, but tell me what you're, yeah, what are you asking us to do tonight, and then we'll get into whether or not they should be involved.
I guess the bigger question, Dan, not because you're off, can we separate these requests?
I mean, well, no, what Dan was doing was, if that's, is that our biggest problem when we have 80 sites out there with connectivity? Because that's what we need, we need Wi-Fi, we need internet.
Well, if internet goes down, voting continues. I want to be very clear about that.
How?
Every voter's information is on every poll book locally. In addition to that, it's checking with the server to make sure they've not signed in anywhere else. But all the data is local, so if internet goes down, it doesn't matter if the data's still there.
That e-poll book's still live with the information for that specific precinct, so.
Since the existence of e-poll books, 15 years, no e-poll book has been hacked. One small e-poll company's email system was hacked in Florida a couple years ago. That's the only known hacking that's happened. And ESNS takes all the security precautions, we're very serious about this, so.
But if they're online, you're telling me they, they talk to each other? If I try to vote in two different areas?
It's gonna come up with a red line saying you already voted.
The board is just connected to the internet. If the internet goes down, Jeremy can vote in two precincts.
But this isn't a vote center county, so you can only vote in the precinct you live in, so the poll book is set up.
Early voting, early voting.
But early voting, you're right.
You know. All right. I guess my question, I guess it's more directed at the clerk, are these requests tied together? Can we buy the equipment, the voting equipment, and not the e-poll books? Or vice versa?
From my understanding, at least for early voting, you would have to get at least some e-poll books. Because e-poll books are used for early voting because all the information is loaded.
We already have them, don't we?
We would need to upgrade them.
They've been on loan, we've let you borrow poll books for that for a couple of years now, out of concern.
We haven't paid anything towards them.
No. Because the old poll books nobody liked, so you guys were really mad about that.
A little bit.
In the meantime, we wanted to make it up, so we just gave you like eight or 10 newer poll books. Now, there's even newer poll book out, and we just let you use those for a couple of years. That, that was successful. And that was a goodwill gesture, Sylvia.
Okay.
Because we wanted to show you that we're partners, not fly-by-night.
Where are the e-poll books listed on the sales agreement?
Page.
In the back, just in the back. Page one and two.
What part of the 1.8 million?
Page, attachment two.
It's on the first page, attachment two, $414,000.
There it is.
There it is.
Right, second.
Want to clearly march electronic poll sales over.
So, you're suggesting, Bob, that you're in favor of the other equipment, but the e-poll books is what you're.
I'm not saying anything, I'm just pointing out, they tie together, that's all.
So, I mean, let me speak to this a little bit. Since this RFP happened, Ohio had an RFP, and they have a most favored nation clause, and some may know what that is. Where, basically, this, this agreement is, is lower than that. So, a year later, we wanted to honor the RFP results, so we were able to reposition the discounts and things to make it, where it didn't violate the Ohio most favored nation. If you take the poll book out, the discount will go down because of that most favored nation thing. So, you're looking at a higher price than, than you originally thought, if you just do the equipment. And that's just a reality of that most favored nation clause, and I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused about what the hell Ohio has to do with us.
I know, it shouldn't. It shouldn't. It shouldn't.
So why does it?
Because of-
If you chose to give Ohio a discount, yay rock, Ohio.
You had a better deal than Ohio got.
Okay, so what? So yay rock, rock set.
They'd lose to us and we would lose a lot of money.
So if you give one state a better deal than another-
All right, so, this is, we're, yeah, so, I guess I have a couple of questions.
You have more, yes, though, yeah.
One is, Jessica, what are you asking us to do tonight? What do you need us to do tonight? Are you asking us just to have the discussion?
It was my understanding that this would just be a discussion. It wasn't advertised. And in order for you guys to make an official decision, you would have to have an emergency meeting, that you need 10 days' notice with the auditor's office to make sure that everything's put into paper.
So, the second part of my question is, from the auditor's perspective, do we worry to go forward with such a thing? You've indicated that you would like for us to make the down payment now and finance the rest? Is that what we're talking about here? What's your recommendation?
Exactly. How you would purchase this is ultimately up to you.
Exactly.
But my comment about ensuring that there's an appropriation for it is, that's just proper fiscal planning. Rather than going forward with this contract and then saying, "Oh, we'll just come back for an additional appropriation."
So where would you suggest-
You can't go back into that.
Yeah, so where would you suggest we would get the money right now?
Well, first off, you might recall that in December of 2017, we had a transfer into the rainy day.
Right.
And the ordinance or resolution that you passed specifically said that this is being set aside for election equipment. If you decide not to pursue the election equipment, then it will roll back to the general fund.
Would we need an additional to spend that money?
Yes, you would.
And when would the state approve the additional? Don't we, a little delay here?
Okay, they're supposed to give us 15 days' decision after we submit the information. I can only say that in the last two years, they have been delayed into March for the additional approval process. We haven't submitted any additional so far. You just approved one tonight, so we'll submit that tomorrow.
So, this is back, not to interrupt, but this is, so this is back to my point. Let's go back to my original question. What's the process here? So you, which is, you're doing exactly what we asked you to do. You're coming in front of us for a discussion. You would, and I assume that commissioners want to know, what is the council willing to do for funding this and not funding this? How we fund it is up to us.
Correct.
But certainly, whether we're willing to do it or not, you would go in front of the commissioners when?
I would let them know that you are leaning towards approving the funding and then be put, they would have an emergency meeting as well.
In your email, it said that we could implement most of the equipment in about a week. Is that what-
We could have delivery in about a week, the earlier we order it. The closer we get to elections, the farther out we're going to be because other people are already placing their orders and first come, first served.
Is there a training curve here that we have to do?
Yes. We would have to be trained on the machines.
So here's my last part of that question. Delivery date, now you alluded to this, and delivery date. What's the latest you could get it and it be ready to run for the primary?
Technically, the middle of March. But that's not fun. That's not fun. So in this agreement, we also updated all the dates. And we said in here you would take delivery on January 31st, just because we were being optimistic.
Right. That's very optimistic. So the, so you're saying that if it was delivered in March, you could have everybody properly trained on it in time for the election?
I'm saying I've done that.
I'm saying it would be a stretch.
I'm asking-
It would be a stretch.
Well, I was gonna, I'm glad you brought that up. How much money does she have for training in her election budget? Just a round number. I don't know if, Jessica, if you know or if they can tell us.
This money's, you've got, this equipment is included in this purchase.
Correct.
No, I'm talking about for poll workers. I mean, what's her budget for paying poll workers, et cetera, et cetera?
Should we include?
Because if you're gonna, if this goes forward and you get the equipment, you better have some people to train because-
Well, yeah, and that's a whole nother animal.
Right, but that animal is the 800-pound gorilla in the room.
Well, that's entirely up to you to locate people to train.
Correct.
Correct, yes. If we can train our staff, then the staff can train.
Well, I know where you're going, Bob, and I think that we have to have that discussion. There are two parts to this. It is, it is a people problem, but I think it's time to move on with the machines. But you're right, that we got to figure out, do we pay the people to train? We've got to get, we've got some fixing to do. It's not just with the machines, the process. It's with the people, the enthusiasm, the training, all the above. So that's another step that we have to take.
And as I spoke with Councilman Paparod yesterday, I did send that email out to all the other clerks and election officials in the state. And from our discussion, we are low on what we pay our poll workers, but we're not that low. And it's about, so far, 50-50 that pays for training. I do think it's a good idea to pay towards training.
Sure, sure, I understand. But, yeah, just so the discussion goes on to the next level.
So I'm wondering, so-
We are looking at both ends of-
Yes.
So you would require, so we would, yours, back to that point. So you would say, if, or you're saying that if you, if we were willing to do this, you need us to have an earlier meeting than February?
We have to pay for the family.
To approve it, right?
I believe the earliest you could have it was January 28th.
You don't have to tell me the earliest. I know, I'm a law lawyer.
But I would-
I'm asking you.
Before the end of February.
So then, the end of that thought is, if the commissioners also have to have an emergency meeting, I wouldn't entirely mind us having a meeting at the same time. Having the commissioners here to ask their questions, to ask them questions about the contract, to ask, have someone from the election board here, have the clerk here, have the auditor here.
How does that work logistically, legally? Can we make a, because we'd have to, we're-
We can have them sit here at our station. We can do what we want after the other.
That's fine. I mean, I think we should set a date. I think we should move forward. I mean-
I want to know.
Because now we indicated to the commissioners, we're setting a meeting to do the additional, that we're moving forward. So then, if they're interested, they'll obviously set their emergency meeting too, to get together some contracts.
I have a few questions for the commissioners. But, and I have a question for the election board. But I also want to know what our financing agreement's going to look like and what we're going to have to budget for.
Before we can make any decision on whether we're going to support that or not, we probably need to know what those numbers are.
And we tried to get the numbers ahead of time.
I mean, it was really reasonable last time they called.
And he has one of the attorney bank hats on to the same institution. So we're hoping that it'll be favorable.
They say up to 140.
Do you, I got another question. On page two, note two, this is in North Woods, a salesman, the equipment, the fair market value for the scanners, et cetera, et cetera, is that to be determined? It says to be determined at the time if we purchase new equipment. Is that not the credit we're getting on the first page or is that number going to change?
So that's referring to, in the future, if you want to sell back the equipment you're buying today.
So that's a buyback clause?
Yes, that was asked to the added, the buyback.
But we got to buy ballots and it looks like it's roughly $17,000 per election?
In ballots.
Am I reading right?
The ballots now are going to be about 10 cents a ballot, whereas today you're paying around 31 cents.
Well, I'm just saying, is ballot layout coding and voice file 17,000 per election?
Note one.
Note one up here on top? Then the card stock we got to buy, et cetera, et cetera?
E-poll election.
Note one.
Yeah, so, each election the county already pays, the programming encoding.
So each election, we have to set up the logic for the election to meet the Indiana election statutes. And so that's a programming each election that you already have in your budget stack. So that stays the same.
17,000 per election and $1,400 a day for training?
Yep.
But that's already included?
And that, you already have training included, but in addition, you know, that's the rate for our project manager. By the way, you have the same project manager for the last 15 years. We just vote by.
And the card stock's 22 bucks?
Or 250 sheets.
Yeah.
So it goes around 1070.
Yeah. Yeah. So when somebody goes in to vote, and she signs in, a ballot will be printed with the candidates that she's allowed to vote for?
When she's done.
Hi?
When she's done. When she signs in on the poll book, it's going to give her a blank ballot with a barcode on it. And she's going to take that and insert it into the express vote. Then she's going to vote. When she gets done, go to-
Is it a touchscreen, I'm assuming?
Yeah, it is.
Touchscreen. And then when she gets to the end of it, it'll show her everyone that she's voted for. If she wants to change anything, she can touch the race that she wants to change it, go back, change it. And then when she confirms that those are the candidates she wants to vote for, it'll print out again with the candidates listed that she voted for before she goes and puts it into the final box.
So let's, let's just set a, let's just advertise and set a meeting to have a vote on this, one way or the other. Let's make sure that we have a commissioner here. Let's make sure that we have the proper financing numbers and we decide to go private bank to finance.
That's 10 days at least, right?
Right. So if we're looking at two weeks from now, is, I mean, 29, 29? Is that your birthday, really?
That's my birthday. I'm going to be 30. I don't know what you guys want to meet on a day.
But you're not going to be 30, again. But what, I mean, do you have a problem with hanging out with us on your birthday? Because I, by the way, that does kind of suck. But I mean, let's pick another day. We can pick the next day.
No, it's, it's fine, you know? My kids-
Jeremy, Commissioner Lewis is willing to give up his birthday for Grover County. Are you right about that?
Are you guys okay with 29th and 29th?
Every year.
It's my birthday, should I guess.
Is your birthday 29th?
Yeah.
Are you kidding me?
Awesome.
I guess. Everybody's right.
I'll read your birthday.
Bet you will.
Yeah.
So, Bob, Sylvia, do you have a problem with doing that?
No.
Bob?
We're just talking about-
We're going to, we're going to set this thing, we're going to advertise it properly, and we're going to have a vote that day. One way or the other. Because we're running out of time to do it for the primary.
Yes, I know that, and time is essence of business, but-
No, time is not of the essence. If we don't buy this equipment, we can sell out of election in late-
For the primaries, yes. So to Bob's point, we could, we're not in desperate station where we can't run an election.
Right.
But if the clerk's asking us to have it in place for the primary, which it sounds like she's asking us, and we are running out of time to honor the, or to approve that request. But you're right, Bob, it doesn't mean we're swallowing the request.
The other issue is, we have a public perception that we're not ready for another election. So anything we move forward with here is going to be something that's going to come sooner than later.
Well, I think this, we've had this discussion for years now. Bobby's saying we've had it for 10 years, but I know this board's had it for a couple of years. And we said, we indicated that the time to do it was in the municipal election. If we put it off, if we don't do it in the primary, we can't use different equipment in the general. Do you want to start this process in a presidential election?
Why can't we use different equipment in the fall?
I was under the assumption that you have to run the primary and the general with the same equipment. Maybe I'm wrong. Jeremy?
It's not technically the law, but that's tradition and custom in Indiana.
Tradition, it's not.
Oh, so, but, so, if you-
It's not a good idea, you're saying.
Exactly.
So, uh-
Sometimes purchases made in haste come back to haunt you.
I don't think this has been haste. We've been talking about it for a couple of years.
We've had this for eight months. Specific information for-
We've got a special meeting in two weeks. We want to do it this year.
We have a new clerk, we're waiting for a new clerk to get in front of us, one way or another.
Well, I agree, but we needed this same discussion withheld a year ago.
But one specific, Jessica, and I appreciate you putting this information together and getting it before us and hopefully getting us on track to move forward. So I appreciate that. One specific question on the information that was presented tonight, that I just, that I would like some clarification on as we move forward, is the refurbished versus not versus new. Because my impression, rightfully or wrongly, was that it was going to be new information, new equipment. And so if we could go back to the previous proposal or the sales order agreement and see if that, if it's always been referenced as refurbished?
It has, it was.
We brought that up before.
Yep, it has.
Okay, so that was different from Jessica's impression, though?
Yeah, from my impression was that they were running out of refurbished and we were going to get, end up getting more new than refurbished, based on what they had on hand.
That was probably true at one point, you're right. But what happened is, our response to the bidding process included all new. And then during negotiations post-winning the RFP, we went into negotiations and we came back with a proposal that just made one part of the thing refurbished, just the DS 200s. And they said that's a good idea because it doesn't make any difference if they're just using one.
Well, it's not just the DS 200s. That's the most important or most expensive, one of the most expensive pieces of the portfolio.
There's another one too.
No, you're showing 140 refurbished pieces of equipment.
That's just one reported of the, so all 300 expresso are new, all the poll books are new, the central scanners new. That, you're right.
What are we getting refurbished?
I want to look at the finances, I want to look at the financing.
Jessica, what are we getting refurbished? What piece of equipment is refurbished? Is that the poll?
No. No, my, my, my impression was the price is for new.
Not the front vote. It was just the-
That's why I want to investigate that before we move on.
What part of it would be refurbished? Would it be the touchscreen or would it be the box?
All of it, all of that picture there.
So if a latch breaks, how do you, but how do you differentiate?
They got a guy driving around.
We got a guy. I love that.
When it says refurbished, how do we know if it was a lock or if it was a touchscreen?
So they'll inspect it thoroughly, cleaned, reloaded, anything that's broken will be fixed. And that's what the refurbishing process is. Then they'll be warranted as new.
So it could have been a maintenance lock?
It could have been, yeah, anything. You're right.
But it's not the poll books, is that?
So it's not the poll books and it's not the expresso?
Okay. I really think we have a few pieces of the puzzle to get together.
Well, between now and then, we could ask questions.
I want the commissioners here. I'm not going to vote on this myself without the, without all the stakeholders here. So let's tend to, let's set a meeting, advertise it, and we can start by, you know, saying a happy birthday.
5:00 PM on the 29th.
And then we can have a-
Earlier the better.
Do you guys have a problem with that?
No.
So I would like for everybody to, I would suggest for everybody to talk amongst themselves, call the commissioners, reach out to Jessica with questions. Let's get as much as we can get gathered up before then. In the meantime, I'm going to double back around to Dave Vangs and find out exactly what he's getting from the banks. As soon as I get information with respect to what financing, interest rates, he can give in terms from the banks, I'm going to disseminate that to you guys so you can sort of mull that over. A suggestion, if we talk to the auditor coming into this meeting and we know exactly what the numbers look like, exactly what kind of money we got to find, exactly how we're going to find it. That's my suggestion.
Can I, can I jump on Mike's comment about refurbished?
Can I jump on Mike's comment about refurbished? What does new cost us? Is that possible, Jeremy?
New would be more expensive.
How much money?
Obvious.
Well, I'm just curious, so, because you generally don't buy used computers, you buy new.
Right.
They're warranted as new.
So right now, the refurbished is three thousand nine nine five, warranted as new. The normal list price is six thousand for new. So it is gonna be significant, so a couple thousand times one hundred and forty, to look at an additional.
And I think that was our conversation originally, when we talked about new and refurbished.
So, alright, so when we come, here's the deal. When we come in two weeks, I would strongly suggest that we have Dave Vangs here and anybody else on the election board that's one. But the only reason I say Dave is because he was working on this agreement, and he's been out there doing the interest rate and terms investigation with the banks. Let's get everybody here, we now have a preliminary look at this, you know, we'll just go from there.
Are there any other specifics? I have refurbished versus new as far as how many interest rates and how much it is for new, like what the total would be?
Are you comfortable with this?
Yeah, I've used it when we were at the election conference, and there was a couple of other ones there as well.
Vicki, what was your budget for training?
Well, in the election board budget for, what, 2019? There's fifteen hundred, but we believe that's largely for staff to go to training.
Thirteen hundred dollars for training?
Pardon me?
Well, I mean, for the poll workers?
No, for the poll workers, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to speak for the election board here, but usually the training for poll workers is done in-house, staff members...
I know that, how much money is for the poll workers pay?
Oh, I see.
Hundred and forty, between a hundred and forty thousand, we were about a hundred and seventy last year.
Okay, good. And perhaps for the twenty-ninth meeting, Jessica, the information you solicited from other counties, have that too, so we can answer some of these other miscellaneous questions.
Jeremy?
Mr. Sins, this is a high school question. Will they let the eighteen-year-olds out if they wanted to be poll workers?
Absolutely.
They did last year.
ABOL doesn't have school, and in our school system, all the kids have to do is ask, and the principals then go.
And we're, and actually, the election board was petitioning almost all the schools.
E-learning days.
They haven't closed on that day.
What it says, ABOL does.
And we've already started working towards that again.
Because we just, this, this...
Alright, so that's a pitch. Yeah, we can, we can talk, that's the whole, so, alright, so, we're all, you know where we're at with the twenty-ninth? Joy, I assume you'll get that out?
Yes.
And I assume you'll let the commissioners know, and you can add... Jessica, you're gonna notify the election board?
We'll let you know tomorrow.
Do you let Jessica's form ask to come tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll do it, and then you need to sign it.
Submit the form for the addition.
Oh, okay. By the end of the day.
Okay, and Vicki, maybe you can get, maybe the answer's no, maybe you can get an idea where they think they'll be approv... You know, are we talking about March for additional approvals by the state? Maybe get a feel, what they're thinking?
Was that about, what did we...
So we know, we're doing additional, money ain't gonna flow till, money's not gonna flow till March? Alright, so...
That's all to the side of the primary, Steve.
I would venture to guess that's probably...
We're not the only municipal.
So, alright, thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Alright. Thanks, keep on...
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you.
Alright, let's, Vicki, let's talk a little bit about these 2018 encumbrances.
Do you need me to sit there?
Yeah, why don't you come down here and let's have a...
Yeah, this is, I'm not gonna say, sign my name.
This happens every end of the year, so it's nothing new, but it is new for you.
We're gonna get new.
We have been advised by State Board of Accounts that the county council should be approving the list of all carry-forward appropriations, also known as encumbrances, from 2018 to 2019. And the best way to think about encumbrances is that instead of using their 2019 budget, the departments that submitted requests are using unappropriated, I mean, unspent appropriations from 2018. They had a, already had the appropriation in their budget, and in order to submit this, we require documentation that it is for an expense incurred in 2018, but for whatever reason, they did not submit the claim. Maybe the invoice didn't come until January, which happens quite a bit.
So we talked a little bit about last year, about how much money do we think we're gonna have carryover? Does this affect that?
Six hundred. Yes.
So, that's not great.
No, because if we don't spend these appropriations out of the 2018, it would eat into any of the cash balances in any of the fund here.
But you've been dealing with this every year, I mean, you're calculating...
It's common, and if the department, once the department does submit the actual invoice, actual claim, and it comes in less than what they submitted to us, we only use the amount that's absolutely needed.
What do you need from us, what are we doing different?
They just want us to know by signing the forms.
Just to sign it.
They want us to know what's going on.
Yes, and I think it is a move for...
So you're asking us to vote to approve this? Is that what you're asking for, a formal vote to approve the appropriations, or to accept them?
To accept the encumbrances.
Alright, so, we have a motion to accept the encumbrances, we have a second, any further discussion? Is this any different than numbers-wise? Is there anything out of whack here? Is it extraordinarily off than you've seen in the years prior? Was it spot-on with the kind of trending?
No, I believe last year in the general fund, we had about seventy-one thousand in additional, I'm sorry, carry-forward encumbrances. And this year, we're looking at sixty-six. Now, in some years in prior years, where I've been very, there's been a lot higher encumbrances.
Alright, thank you, first and a second, can I get all in favor, seeing as we're saying aye? Aye, opposed?
I would ask that you sign this resolution and send it back my way, so we have it on file.
So any other, anything else, any further that wants to break?
Yeah, I do got a couple, I got one question. Vicki, when you get back to your desk, say hi. I have a request. Go and, no, go sit down, it's fine.
Show of hands, anybody have any idea what Bob's talking about?
No.
You don't?
Okay.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
The, the departments have non-reverting funds? The recorder, perpetuation, that sort of thing? Could I get a report every quarter on what their cash balance is?
Certainly.
Across the board, everybody. And that includes Lloyt, or whatever you guys call it this year, what do they call it now? Lit, Lloyt, whatever? I just want to know what the cash is. Whenever, when I was hearing this, I noticed that the, I heard that the recorder has five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in his perpetuation fund. That sort of thing. Not any non-reverting.
So Vicki, how much of an effort is it for you to print that out? Nothing, right?
No, it's available to...
Just bring it to all the meetings, just bring it to a meeting.
Oh, I just, it's just...
It's a good idea, it's a good idea, just give us a copy of what...
Do you want it in paper format, not just to show it here?
Yeah, you can do that.
You can run it pretty easily now.
Probably not a bad idea for us to turn those.
Yeah, but...
Anything else, Bob?
Follow the money, nope.
Anybody else have anything to bring before this board?
They should let me come back.